Good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending the City Council's special meeting for it. That is actually now our regular meeting, excuse me, for Tuesday, April 8th, 2025. If we could have the roll call, please.
Mayor Karen Howe.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Kaylee Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart. Councilmember Kent Trine. Councilmember Sid Gupta.
Here.
Councilmember Rosheen O'Farrell.
Here.
Thank you, and I'd like to move that both Councilmember Trine and Stewart are excused because they told us in advance.
Second.
It's been first and you seconded it. Thanks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. So if we could have the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember O'Farrell, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And does anybody have the land acknowledgement pulled up and handy?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Gupta, please.
We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks. We'll now move to public comment. Is there anybody that signed up for public comment in the room? No? And for online?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
You did not sign up.
You did not sign up, but you would love to give public comment.
Oh, I got them right.
The stage is yours.
Super good job, Andre, for the presentation, by the way. Enjoyed it.
Good evening, City Council. Paul Stickney-Samamish. This is part two of my shotgun topic comments that I started at the Planning Commission on last Thursday. So hear that first because it lays the foundation for what's said here. A quick look back at part one was there are four categories of housing in Samamish, in my view. Category A is affordable housing, prices from $175,000 to $500,000. Category B is $500,000 to $1,400,000 of market rate housing. Category C is condominiums and townhomes over 1.4 million. And category D is large, single-family housing. From all the study I've done, A, B, and C have tremendous shortages in our community, and D has a big surplus relative to 23,000 houses, households that live here, 7,000 workforce jobs, and what are their housing needs over time. I've been advocating to add 5,000 market rate housing units in the B and C categories to the 2,100 A affordable housing units. If those were met over 20 years, that would meet about 70% of the lowest threshold of need in those categories, and the single-family housing equivalent would be about equal to 90 single-family homes a year built from a traffic perspective. The vast majority of these units would be primarily in centers, very little in any of the neighborhoods. And I think it's just exciting to have a combination of complete, compact, and connected, plus critical mass for transit in 4% of the city, and retain the coveted character in 96% of the city. I think it's awesome and favorable. These housing numbers are bottom-up, authentic, based on who and what we are relative to our housing supplies. And the real issue in Samamish isn't that we have the need. The issue is, do we have the will as a community, or the desire, quite frankly, to meet the need? In order to answer that, we have to have accurate facts, and then compare consequences and effects of meeting them, and have the community understand what that is to move forward. But I advise that the council pivot fearlessly on this issue. Use the power of common cause to implement a thorough, rigorous, and fair approach to quantify housing need factors for A, B, and C housing, then set legislative targets, if that meets community goals, in the comprehensive plan alongside A. It's time to attain righteous, optimal cycle-of-life housing supplies for our city. It's time to make it so. Appreciate the chance to speak.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room that didn't get a chance to sign up? And if not, we can move to online?
There's no online preregistered callers.
So now we are going to move to the Board of Commission interviews. So we're going to interview for the Human Services Commission. We have a couple of applicants. And we have ballot, we all have our ballots, I believe. Is that correct? Everybody has their ballot? Great. And so we will go in the order of the ballot as soon as I find mine. So Eric Jarvey, if you could please stand up. And we're going to ask you a question, and we're kind of opti, well, go right over there to the podium, and turn on the mic. There's a little button right by the end of it there. Got it? Nope. No, you don't.
I pushed the button and it read.
There you go.
And I hear myself.
Gotcha.
Okay.
And you'll have five minutes. And what we're hoping, as I ask you this question, is that you'll weave in information about yourself so that we get to know you better. So the question is, are there any gaps in programs or policies related to the work of Human Services Commission that you would like to help the city address? And please explain.
I think one of the biggest gaps that I would like to help address is a gap that I feel, and myself, and I think others, other residents do as well, is just knowledge. Some of the data that I think the city has access to, and, you know, the data that the average citizen has access to, is there's a gap there in terms of, I think, from the comments that I've heard from city council members in the past, and just the average resident, I'd like to basically help cross that knowledge, kind of bridge that knowledge gap that we have, because I think we can help have better decisions and also better understanding and collaboration on the actions that we're taking to meet the city vision statement that you put forward earlier in your address. So as a data analysis, like wanting to do good type of person, I think that type of information that a commission like this can provide will not only help the city council, of course, but also could help residents. And I think there's a gap there. So that's a big motivation for me being in front of the podium today, even though this is not a place that I have a lot of past experience. So I'm a mix of desire to contribute, but also a desire to learn, to fill my own curiosity, which is a curiosity I think a lot of residents share.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
You know, you do have a couple of more minutes. I was kind of hoping you would tell me a little bit more about yourself, if you wouldn't mind just.
Yeah, I thought there might be more questions coming.
No, there actually isn't.
Okay.
And it's not a trick. But if you could just, like, for two minutes, just tell us about yourself and why you're passionate about.
Okay, so I am a 25-year resident of Samamish. My family has really enjoyed living here. We live on the north side, but I've gotten to know, you know, all of the parks and lots of different things, from having young kids to older children, and now my children are in college. So that's a little bit about our background. And as a part of that, I've seen the growth of the city. When we first moved here, City Hall was in a rented spot next to the Ace Hardware. That isn't there anymore either, but I'm encouraged to hear is coming back. So that's our background. We've seen a lot of what you mentioned about the inclusive, safe, caring neighborhoods. We live in one of those neighborhoods, and I'm forever grateful for that. And that's something that I want to preserve, and I think the Human Services Commission plays a big role in that. And I feel a desire to be intentional about how my volunteer time gets spent, and I feel like this is a volunteer area that has a lot of impact for the amount of time and effort that I want to put in. So that is also guiding some of where I'm coming from. I have a background, as you saw in the application, with lots of different volunteer experiences. I volunteered with Eastside Fire and Rescue for about five years as a service support volunteer when I was younger. I've been a part of the Samamish Day of Service, which, please, everybody sign up for, May 3rd, coming up. I've had a chance to do different projects with lots of different nonprofit organizations in the area. So that's also another thing driving my desire to learn more about it from this human services side.
Okay, and thank you very much for that extra information. I appreciate you doing that.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Okay.
So Jason, same instructions. If you could please tell us about yourselves a bit in the five minutes that you have, and also answer the question, are there any gaps in programs or policies related to the work of the Human Services Commission that you would like to help the city address?
Sure.
And please explain.
Thank you for the opportunity. Take the second half of the question first. The three, or the four years that I looked at that I think are, I don't want to say they're under addressed, but I think they're, they need more addressing, let's put it that way. The Climate Resilience Program, I think, is a really good opportunity for people to realize that they can have an impact at the local level. I think it speaks to what the Human Services Commission is supposed to be doing, which is reaching out to the community and showing people how they can make an impact, and learning what those issues and opportunities are, and connecting people with resources. Domestic abuse, I think, is one of the most underreported issues in our society, and specifically in our city. And I think the more we lean into that as a city and recognize that those issues are there, and bring resources to people in need, and let people know that we're here to support them, I think that's something the Human Services Commission should really jump into. Mental wellness, huge issue coming out of COVID. People have underreported, and they're just living with mental health issues behind closed doors. So again, more we can reach out, whether it's social media or talking to people door-to-door, I think it's critically important that we connect those services. It's really what I think the Human Services Commission is. It's a resource connector. How do you connect the society, the community, the individuals in our community to those services? And last one is always, more services for seniors and youth. I think we're behind. I think there's reasons why we're behind, but I think that the Human Services Commission has done an amazing job of really growing in the past few years to try to make those things more reality, and I'd like to see more of that. Can I read my little brief statement about me? Thanks. Okay, so I am familiar with the critical role the Human Services Commission plays in our community. I've reviewed the minutes, work plan, needs assessment, and grant requests of the commission over the past year. It is critical to be open to new challenges and available to the public to respond. So a sense of openness is what I'm hoping to bring to the commission. I worked in human resources myself for the past 20 years. I know that much is needed to help our neighbors to be safe, fed, warm, and healthy. Those are the four categories that I try to make sure, what does our community look like? Are we safe? Are we fed? Are we warm? And are we healthy? The Human Services Commission has done so many good things, so many helpful things in the past few years, but there's so much more we can do. It's my view that the commission has to act more proactively in a responsible way to go out into the community, and that means being seen, being heard. Meetings, yes, but going to those Rotary and those Kiwanis and those Scouts and those schools, and being out there and listening to what people have to say, two ears, one mouth. What do people have to say? What's going on in our community? Reporting back and listening on social media, too, as much as that can be a little bit weird, but listening to people say and reading what people have to say, it's critically important. Taking those ideas, taking those initiatives, bringing that back and reporting back to the commission, and bringing real-life, tangible, accountable goals back to the council and say, here are some things that we think are important, and then taking the direction that you guys give us from a council perspective to the commission, and then acting on that, making sure we're following through, quality assurance. To me, the big things that we're, I look at in terms of when I were successful are accountability and transparency. Do we say, did we do what we say we're going to do? And did we do it in a way that we want to be judged? We want to make sure we're doing things in a way that people see what we're doing. Overall, I think that the big thing that, obviously, the elephant in the room is we have major budget issues at the city level, and so working across our allies, or across communities, across other service organizations, nonprofit partners, it's critically important that we try to ally ourselves with other communities and other services and other organizations, nonprofits, to make things happen. I have extensive experience myself, just building grant programs, writing grant requests, and responding to those questions that come up in grant requests to make sure we're doing it the right way, in a legal way. Applying for research and grants, something I think we could do more of at the commission level. If I'm selected, I look forward to serving the commission. I think you have two really good choices, and I'm happy to be here and appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So council, you have a ballot. So while the ballots are being counted, I just want to first express my gratitude, and that's sincere gratitude, for showing up today to volunteer to help the city, because we really cannot do this ourselves. We need your help, and I appreciate you stepping up to being willing to serve. If the vote doesn't go the way that you would prefer, please understand, we have openings all the time, right here. And now that you've kind of seen what it's like to go through the process, I'm hoping that you would consider applying for other positions if you don't get the one that you Thank you very much. And it appears, congratulations are in order for Eric Jarvey. Thank you for being willing to serve and for stepping up. It's a lot of work, but you'll really enjoy it, and it's wonderful people that you'll be serving with. So now, I think that we actually will be doing a resolution to appoint one member to the Samamish Human Services Commission. Is there something there that?
I can make that motion.
That would be helpful.
All right. I move to, sorry, let's see, I move to approve Resolution 2025-1100, appointing Eric Jarvey to the Human Services Commission.
Second.
First and seconded. You don't want to speak to the motion? All right, then. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, and congratulations. So we will now move on to the exciting consent calendar. Is there a move to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Consent calendar's approved. And we go now to presentations and proclamations. The first proclamation will be on Arbor Day.
Thank you, Mayor. This proclamation for Arbor Day, April 9th, 2025, whereas Arbor Day was first observed in 1872 with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees and forests absorb carbon dioxide and produce oxygen, keeping our air clean and water safe to drink, reducing topsoil erosion, producing wildlife habitat, promoting physical fitness, and improving mental health, decreasing temperatures on hot days, and mitigating surface water runoff. And whereas maintaining healthy trees and forest canopy is an effective strategy to combat the negative effects of climate change, and trees increase property values, enhance the environment, and beautify the community. And whereas planting the right tree in the right place helped trees grow strong and healthy. And whereas the city of Samamish was recognized as a Tree City USA by meeting the four standards of the Arbor Day Foundation, having a tree board or department, a tree, a public tree care ordinance, an annual tree resource budget of $2 per capita, and an Arbor Day observance. And whereas Samamish adopted an urban forest management plan in 2019. And whereas the Samamish City Council expressed its desire for the city to continue to preserve official Tree City USA recognition, and to continue tree planting and care efforts in the city. And whereas Arbor Day is an opportunity to celebrate Samamish's forested areas and educate the community about the importance of trees to grow a better tomorrow. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Karen Howe, on behalf of the Samamish City Council, do hereby proclaim April 9th, 2025, as Arbor Day in the city of Samamish.
Thank you. And for the Earth Day proclamation, we have Councilmember Gupta.
Thank you. Samamish-Washington Proclamation for Earth Day, April 22nd, 2025. Whereas the earth is our shared home, providing us with sustenance, beauty, and resources essential for life, and the global theme for Earth Day 2025 is "Our Power, Our Planet", a call to advocate for widespread awareness on the benefits of renewable energy, decrease our dependence on fossil fuels, and promote energy efficiency. And switching to renewable energy sources is crucial for reducing greenhouse gas emissions because renewables that are available in abundance all around us, provided by the sun, wind, water, waste, and heat from the earth, generate electricity without emitting greenhouse gases or pollutants into the air. And reducing, reduced air pollution can significantly reduce the occurrence of respiratory and cardiovascular diseases. And decreasing greenhouse gas emissions helps to mitigate risks associated with climate change, such as heat waves, floods, and extreme weather events. And the city of Samamish is committed to promoting and supporting positive actions to improve sustainability, preserve natural assets, create a healthier environment, and make a positive impact on the environment in celebration of Earth Day. And on Earth Day and every day, community members are encouraged to participate in efforts to reduce carbon emissions, encourage recycling, utilize renewable resources, reduce pollution, and conserve water, land, and energy. And the future of our planet depends on our ability to transition to cleaner energy, to preserve the health and vitality of our oceans, lands, and communities, to build a healthy, sustainable, equitable, and prosperous future for us all. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Karen Howe, on behalf of the Samamish City Council, does hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2025, as Earth Day in the city of Samamish.
Thank you. And I believe we have an opportunity now to actually do a photo op and present the proclamations. Is that right?
That is correct. We actually have a few members of the Sustainability Commission here with us tonight, and we'd like to invite them up and accept both proclamations, because they are doing a lot of great work on behalf of the city, and I appreciate the opportunity to recognize them.
Exactly. And we'll be over to Amy. So we're going to be going to, actually, the presentation from Sound Transit, and we have Ariel Taylor and Savannah Steele with us today to help guide us through. So thank you for being.
Of course. Good evening. That's at the top. Good morning. Thanks for the little troubleshooting here. Or good morning, good evening. Wow, I'm on a roll. Yes, it's so great. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Ariel Taylor. I am on the Government Relations Team at Sound Transit, specifically focused here in East King County. And joining me is?
Thank you. My name's Savannah Steele. I'm also on the Government and Community Relations Team at Sound Transit, and thanks for having us tonight.
Yes, and we are here to talk to you about a very exciting project happening just outside your northern city boundary, which is the Downtown Redmond Link Extension and the grand opening celebration that's happening on May 10th. So for everybody who is watching today, and everybody in the audience, there is a very big celebration happening on May 10th. Please mark your calendars. And we're here today to really talk to you about what that means for the community of Samamish, for the Eastside community in general, all of the years of work that's gone into this, and also just the excitement that you should expect on opening day, and hopefully encourage some of your residents to come out and join us. So what we're going to cover today is just super quick overview of Sound Transit. I mean, like, I'm going to spend very little on that, and more about the substance. Talk a little bit about what the Two Line is, what it does, what it brings to the community, and then also, of course, the main event on May 10th, and what to expect. So just super quick overview, Sound Transit is a voter-approved agency. We've been approved via three different ballot measures since 1996. The initial Sound Transit ballot measure was called Sound Move, and it approved the first extension of light rail within the city of Seattle down to the airport, which is currently in operations. And it also included the creation of Sounder Commuter Rail that operates between Everett and downtown Seattle, and then also Tacoma, and just south of Tacoma, like the Lakewood area, up to downtown Seattle. It also funded the Sound Transit Express bus services. So I think residents of Samamish might know the 554. That is funded through the 1996 Sound Move Initiative. The 2008 ballot measure brought light rail to the east side for the first time. So that was called ST2, and it funded light rail from downtown Seattle over Mercer Island and out to Bellevue and Redmond. The first segment of what was now called the Two Line opened in Bellevue and Redmond to the Microsoft campus last April, so almost a year ago. That was very exciting, and we are still waiting to finish the final connection of that Two Line that crosses Lake Washington, which I'll talk about later in this presentation. But what we're really here to talk about tonight is ST3. And the first ST3 project, which was approved in 2016, is actually coming online in Redmond on May 10th. So this is the first of this very big list of projects that's coming online since the voters approved it in 2016. that's coming online since the voters approved it in 2016. So what is the voter-approved system I was just talking about? It is this beautiful colorful map that kind of looks like colorful spaghetti that you see up here. All of the numbers you see, the one, the two, three, and the four, those are all light rail extensions. So some of them are currently in operation, specifically that green one that you see over there. That is currently operating through Seattle. The Two Line is bifurcated right now. You'll see a map here in a second. But the full Two Line will run from downtown Redmond all the way over Mercer Island, up through Seattle, and actually will run into Snohomish County. Of course, it will connect in with the One Line so residents can take it to the airport, take it wherever they'd like to go. This is what the map will look like when the system is fully built out. So this is what is voter-approved and what we are currently working on opening today. It includes the four light rail lines. It includes the two sounder lines. And it includes the stride bus rapid transit program, which will mainly be operating on I-405 between Buryan and Bellevue and Linwood and Bellevue and also between Shoreline and Bothell. So what are we here to talk about? We're here to talk about the Two Line. Look at that. Hello, welcome to Redmond. Two-line service to East King County, I just mentioned, open to the public last year in 2024. We had eight stations open between South Bellevue and the Redmond Technology Station, which is the Microsoft campus. We had 35,000 people join us for opening day last year. I don't know if everyone on council was there last year for that opening day, but it was wild. I know I did see some of you there. It was very, very exciting. We are expecting that same level of excitement, maybe not 35,000 people, but still quite a bit of people for the downtown Redmond opening on the 10th. Ridership has been exceeding initial estimates for the Two Line. It kind of goes in waves where especially on beautiful sunny months, we see an uptick in ridership. And then, of course, in the January kind of colder months, we do see a dip. But it has been pretty consistent, meeting our ridership expectations. For members of the public who are watching right now, you can actually click on that yellow link and you can see a dashboard that shows all of the different data points, ridership trajectory, all of that. It's a very fun tool for those of you who would like to take a look. And then, of course, up next, the two new stations opening to downtown Redmond. And we will be opening the segment, which is called I-90, the East Link Connection, the Cross Lake Connection between South Bellevue and the International District later this year. So that is very exciting news. We are currently waiting for the first trains to start testing on the floating bridge. And as soon as that starts happening, we'll have much more information about when that opening will be. All right. The Downtown Redmond Project is, I think, the thing that we're here to talk about, which is, of course, 3.4 miles of new light rail service into downtown Redmond. So it's extending the existing Two Line that's currently in operations into downtown Redmond with a station at Merrymore Village Station and also at downtown Redmond. The Merrymore Village Station in particular, I want to make note for the city of Samamish, has a 1,400-stall parking facility. We built that facility, Sound Transit built that facility, knowing that it is within a mile of the northern term or the northern border of the city of Samamish. And we know that that is where the city of Samamish and the residents will likely be accessing this service. So we know that our goal is to catch people before they get onto State Route 520 and try to avoid some of that traffic impact. We also know that especially in mayor, the mayor of state of the city this morning, this afternoon, this evening, today, that the metro route that is currently serving the city of Samamish in the core is going to be increased pretty significantly in frequency to help service that station. So it will connect in with the Merrymore Village Station. And of course, all of this happens on May 10, opens to the public. You can also access these stations by regional trails, like the East Lake Samamish Trail, the East Trail. There's a Bear Creek Trail. There's a lot of different bicycle options to also access these stations. Here is a quick look at the Merrymore Village Station. You can kind of see it's a little still under construction. That will be fixed by the time we open on the May 10. But this is, of course, the parking facility, the station itself, the sidewalks and the roads that we're constructing as part of the project. Over on the right-hand side, you can see where the buses are going to be in proximity to the station itself. So that is where the bus transfers will be to the light rail station. Of course, there'll also be Orca card machines. People can buy an Orca card, load their Orca card, all of the things that they need to use the system. And also, of course, the parking facility, but also bike storage. There's going to be a lot of bike storage at this station in particular. Knowing that there are trail connections in this area, we wanted to make sure that we were accommodating the large amount of bicycles that we are expecting, especially from those residents of further East King County. This is the downtown Redmond Station. You may have seen it if you've traveled through downtown Redmond. It is right there next to the East Trail, Redmond Central Connector. That's actually that concrete trail right there adjacent to the station itself. We also expect a large amount of pedestrian and bicycle connections at this station. This is actually the terminus, the permanent terminus for the Two Line will be at the downtown Redmond Station. So residents will be able to go all the way from here all the way through downtown Seattle and up through into Snohomish County if they were to want to do that. So it really will connect Samamish, Redmond, and the communities in far East King County to the regional transit system. Excuse me. This is the operating hours of the Two Line. As you can see, the dashed line up there on the image are the two new stations we're adding on May 10. But the current Two Line is operating every 10 minutes between 5:30 a.m. and 9:30 p.m., seven days a week. That service time will increase when we do cross I-90 and head into downtown Seattle. This is just that truncated period of time where we've noticed people are using the service the most. So when the Two Line does cross over I-90, those service hours will increase significantly into the wee hours of the morning. It will be approximately 19 minutes. I don't know why. It's all, that's a formatting error. It will be 19 minutes between downtown Redmond and downtown Bellevue, which if sometimes you've been stuck on 520 or 405, that can be significantly a better option for those who are going between the two stations. They will be operating in two-car trains. If you are a nerd like me, two-car trains mean there's basically two train cars associated with each train that moves. When we open across Lake Washington, that will expand to four car trains. So the service is expandable as we start to see more people ride our service. And of course, all of our stations are ADA accessible. And I'm going to turn it over to Savannah next.
Great, thanks. Okay, so we'll talk a little bit about the celebration on May 10, which we're super excited for. And as Ariel mentioned, some of you attended the Two Line opening with us. So you have a little bit of a sense of what might be about to happen on the 10th. But we'll do a grand opening. The service will begin for riders. But we'll also be doing a ribbon cutting. So that will kick off at 10:30 on the 10th. So we invite you out to that. That's going to be at the downtown Redmond Station. We're really excited to kind of kick things off, cut the ribbon, and then that first train is going to start running at noon. So we're excited about that. And similar to the Two Line opening last April, there's going to be some community activation at both of the stations. So those plans are underway right now. But the stations will have a lot of events going on, both the downtown Redmond Station and the Merrymore Village Station, from noon to 4. So folks can come out, attend the ribbon cutting if they want, and then hop on the train and just kind of go between the two stations. And then also carry on all the way into Bellevue because the train will be in full service at that point. And then just a few photos. Obviously, the one on the left is from the Two Line opening. As Ariel mentioned, like 35,000 folks joined us for that. So we are really excited to have the community out on May 10. We're hoping that a good amount of Samamish residents will also join us for that celebration. You know, whether that's by biking there or hopping on the 269 and joining us, they can get to Merrymore Village Station. So we're excited about that. And then on the right is just a picture from the Linwood Link opening. So that was a similar kind of market feel. And there's going to be some market elements at the Merrymore Village Station for community members to explore. And then just kind of further on that, there's, you know, the community groups that we have activating both downtown Redmond and Merrymore Village have got a lot of programming from various other kind of community organizations that they're inviting out for the day. So we're going to have, these are some examples from the Two Line opening, the helmet giveaway. And at the Bell Red Station, the upper right corner was like a mural that the community came together and painted in the rain. It was like, it was really like, it was beautiful. And we'll have a lot of programming going on at the stages as well. And then the city of Redmond recently got an EV fire truck. And so this is, of course, yeah, obviously fire truck. But at the Merrymore Village Station, there's going to be a touch a truck moment as well so the community can engage with some of our first responders. And then just some of the kind of visuals that you can kind of anticipate seeing on the day, a lot of Two Line kind of visuals so that we can familiarize riders with the service that's going to be accessible to them and going to continue to expand as we open across the lake. I think, any questions for us?
Great. Council questions. Councilmember Gupta.
Thank you for the presentation. This is so, so exciting. Also really appreciate the note about bike storage at Merrymore Village. Could you remind me when the 269 service change will take place?
That is an excellent question that I don't remember off the top of my head. But I do know that King County Metro, who is operating that service, is planning to do that pretty quickly. I will absolutely follow up with you on that. But I do believe that the goal is to have them all like open and ready to go at the same time. So if that's not already in place, it will be shortly after the opening.
Great. That was my understanding as well, especially because, at least with our existing or previous level of service, we don't get weekend. So if people want to take the bus there, we would need to have the enhanced service. So looking forward to that. And do you know the parking capacity for the downtown Redmond Station?
I do know the parking capacity, which is zero. The goal is to actually concentrate our parking garages into different stations. So the downtown Redmond Station, because of the land uses that surround it, is much more of a pedestrian, bike-oriented station. And that's why we built such a large parking facility at the Merrymore Village Station. It can, the streets, the topography, the surrounding land uses could accommodate that parking structure much more easily, I guess, than the downtown Redmond Station. So the downtown station, no parking. Merrymore Village, 1,400 stalls. One stop to the, I guess, southwest would be the Redmond Technology Station, which also has a parking facility. So there's many parking facilities across the Two Line, but the downtown station does not have any parking associated with it.
Great. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Farrell.
Thank you for the presentation. I actually had that same question that Councilmember Gupta had about the 269. So thank you for answering that. And I just want to say I'm very excited. I will be there on May 10 with my family. We're a very excited family about the two, the two like expanding and getting to see more of our region via public transportation that I have made my children ride since they were in elementary school. So we're very excited. So we will be there and thank you for coming today. I really appreciate the information.
Deputy Mayor Lamb.
So I'm excited to see this open. I have two questions. Could you give us an update on link to Issaquah? And the second question is, and I know this is perhaps more of a metro question. And this is regarding 269. There's like 27 stops between Samamish Park and Ride to the Merrymore Station. That's a lot of stops. Does Metro have any thought into making like, you know, maybe five of them an express so that there are fewer stops? And I don't know like how this would affect the entire, the entire system. But I do think that there would probably be more ridership if there was an express, even on just on some of the routes. I mean, just on like some of the times.
Absolutely. And I hear you on that. As a transit rider myself, I love it when the bus goes fast. So I do not know the answer about Metro in particular. Sound Transit, the rail service, Metro, the local service provider. However, I know that Metro has been working on what's called East Link Connections, which is gathering a lot of that feedback from people to see how we can, we as the global transit, we can improve on those things. I think that it's definitely worth a discussion with Metro about how to tailor the service for the community better so that we can drive ridership and drive attendance and ridership to the light rail if that's the ultimate goal. You asked a second question. Can you repeat it? I'm so sorry. Oh, Issaquah. Thank you. Do you want to take that one or you want me to take it? Okay. The Issaquah line, which I showed early in the slideshow, is called the Four Line. So that line is scheduled for the, what we call, end of the capital program. It's the last project to come online in the Sound Transit 3 voter-approved measure. That project is not scheduled to open until the 2040s, which is a very long time away. Pre-project planning for that line is starting in 2027. So as we start to open up some of these lines, like the downtown Redmond line crossing Lake Washington and some of that other work, then we'll start transitioning and focusing on the South Kirkland to Issaquah line, which will be the Four Line.
Great. Thank you. Of course.
Yes, thanks for the presentation. And as a little bit of a follow-on to Deputy Mayor Lamb's question about just, it was about Metro and just speeding things up. You know, trying to get on the map with Metro and Rapid Ride has been extraordinarily difficult. We are not anywhere in that discussion at all. But it's something that we will continue to press on because we know if we don't keep pressing on it, we'll never be part of the conversation. Now, the couple of questions I have for you have to do with, first of all, with the bike cages or the bike holding areas. Is it something that would actually accommodate an e-bike?
Yes, we are planning on that. So the e-bike, or the, excuse me, the bike storage facilities are bike lockers. They're actually fairly large. And they're actually very, you have to use your Orca card to get into them. So, and there's something like 17 cents an hour or something. Like, it's very affordable.
So there is a fee for that?
There is a fee for that, for the locker. If you just wanted to use a bike rack, which we will have a lot of those as well, of course, you're not going to have to pay a fee for that.
Okay. And what about a fee for parking?
Also a great question. Right now, Sound Transit does not pay for parking. However, we do have a policy at Sound Transit that if we notice that a parking facility is hitting 90, 95% utilization and it's becoming difficult for our riders to find a parking spot, we are going to institute a pay-for-parking program. Downtown Redmond is not opening with that assumption at this moment in time. But if it starts to become a problem where people cannot find a spot at the downtown, or, excuse me, at the Merrymore Village Station or a different park and ride, there is a mechanism in place where Sound Transit can implement a pay-to-park scenario. The, it's also a low amount. If you were to have a part or pay to park at a Sound Transit facility, there, it is a very low fee. I'm thinking it's somewhere in the $5 to $10 range, so.
And what I'm curious about too, in the stations where there is a fee to park, what has, has it been a result where instead then you drive behavior differently so people start to take the bus to the transit center? And so you're starting to push people out on the lines differently? Has that been the case?
I would say there's two sides to that. So the first one is the pay-to-parking policy is sort of intended to actually prioritize transit riders. So people who are actually coming and parking at the facilities, who are actually riding the system. We've noticed in some of our other places that people come and park at our facilities who may not be riding the system. Maybe they're going across the street or they're meeting up their friends and carpooling, which is another form of transit, not trying to degrade carpooling at all. But we are trying to incentivize people to be actually using the transit service itself.
Okay.
So that's one side of the policy's plan. The other side is yes, we really encourage people to use multimodal means to actually access our system. So whether that's encouraging people to actually take the bus and transfer to the light rail or take their e-bikes, for instance, to the light rail, that is something that we are also hoping to encourage that behavior by instituting some of those pay-to-park policies.
Hey, can I ask just about general safety in terms of just, do you have, are there transit police?
Yes.
Are you stepping up that service? Do you feel it's necessary?
Yes, that's a great question. So transit safety is like a very real, a very like real thing for people to feel who want to be on our system and want to use it every day. Transit safety is like an actual core value at Sound Transit. It's literally in our core mission. We do have safety officers at each of our light rail stations. They are uniformed. They are not, they are not King County, you know, like super vested up people, but there are transit security officers and also King County Sheriff's support at each of those stations. So not only are they at the stations themselves, but they are also riding the system, the trains themselves. We do know that especially on the Seattle side, we do have even more security presence over there just because of the sheer number of people, the sheer number of stations we have. On the two-line, we have not necessarily seen as of yet a large security issue or, what's the word I'm looking for? The number of officers who are at the stations seem to be very appropriate for the two-line.
For the traffic?
Yes.
And in, oh, I had another question. Dang it. Okay, well, you're off the hook because I don't remember it. I really appreciate both of you coming out this evening, sitting through the state-of-the-city address and going and sticking around and giving us this presentation. And I just remembered my question. I knew if I chose a little longer. And it had to do with fare enforcement. So are you going to let people ride for free for a while, a couple of days? What are your thoughts?
Also a great question. So Sound Transit does have a fare enforcement program. You may see them if you ride the system called fare ambassadors. They are very much different from our security personnel that are at the stations themselves. Fare ambassadors are actually, even though we don't have turnstiles, we are a tap-to-pay system. They are really educational type of ambassadors. So they go around, check your fare. If you haven't paid your fare, they tell you how you can pay your fare. What's the barrier from, you know, like, why aren't you paying your fare? They ask you some of those fare questions. There is a mechanism where we give you sort of a, we track you, making sure you're paying. If you get to a certain point in time where this is clearly a person who does not want to or cannot pay their fare, a lot of the times it's the cannot side of the equation. We tend to hook them up with services. So whether that's getting them involved with ORCA Lift, which is a low or no, a low or no fare card for access to our system or other services. So it really is a fare enforcement with the intent of actually being good stewards to our riders who are actually depending on it every day.
And I know Metro has the, you know, the under 18 free, is the same for you?
Same for us. If you are under 18, you ride for free.
Okay, thank you. Again, appreciate you coming out tonight.
Of course.
Thank you.
And for new business, we have the city's permitting process with David Pyle.
And if I could get promoted, that would be great. No problem. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here in front of you this evening to present an overview of the city's permit process. It is something I've done for quite a bit of my career and am very familiar with permitting, although it is a bit challenging at times. Tonight's goal is to provide an overview of the process and how it intersects with the policy and regulatory direction established by the council. And ultimately, how permitting helps deliver outcomes in the community that we're all interested in seeing. Before I begin, I want to just sort of, this quote is just absolutely, I think, perfect to describe the permitting world. "Government is a bunch of hard-working people trapped in dysfunctional systems who produce invisible things for people who do not want them on behalf of others who do want these things for reasons we rarely articulate and can hardly measure." So our goal is to try to break this paradigm and to be, our mission statement as a department is to provide a helpful nexus for development and regulatory activities for customers while working with the community to define a long-term policy vision that serves the best interests of the community as a whole. We're also really striving to be accountable, transparent, available, efficient, and understandable to the community. Just to highlight the, sorry, the highlight, I've highlighted the org chart. And apologize, I was doing that in the back just a minute ago because I felt that the staff in green are largely devoted to permitting. The staff that you see on a day-to-day basis or as part of our work are the ones that are not highlighted. So you could see the, the volume of work that we take on related to permitting in the background and the, I guess, amount of manpower that it takes to, or staff power it takes to, to keep permitting moving forward. I just wanted to highlight this for you. It is a major part of the city's day-to-day activities and administrative function. We have a permit program because it is, number one, required by law. And number two, it ensures building and development activities comply with those rules that be put in place. And number three, that it really tries, it's a tool that we can use to ensure that development and construction is reflective of community goals. This is where we start to get into some of the categories of permitting. And I think this is where a lot of the nuances exist that are often misunderstood by community members, property owners, developers, et cetera, that the first type of permit that we see the most of is ministerial. And these are the day-to-day permits, like tree removal, clearing and grading, basic clear and grade permits, building permits, home remodels, home additions. There are a lot of these, electrical permits. These are all called ministerial permits. And these really don't require discretion. They're, they either meet the requirements or they don't. And it's a line staff decision and we make lots of these decisions during the day to issue these permits. Administrative permits, there are two different categories of those. The first is a ministerial administrative is really what it's called. But it's a lower-level administrative permit that is based on some requirements that are reviewed by specialized staff. Many of our staff have unique training and skill sets that they use to review development permits to make sure that they are compliant with our development regulations. The criteria-based administrative are discretionary director decisions. These might be things like short plats or conditional use permits. These are usually require a public comment, period, and are repeatable. Then finally, you get down into the quasi-judicial type of action, which we have few of these. We do not have that many, that are the long plats or they're the shoreline permits, which are usually require a hearing and require demonstrated compliance with criteria and creation of a record. So now getting into the process overview, and we've tried over the years in many ways to present the process to applicants using words, using graphics, and using narratives that we, we are, have gotten pretty good at telling over the permit, the permit center desk or over the phone. And really, when I first came here in 2015, there was a bit of a problem because we had customers coming into the front counter and meeting with staff at the desk and having great conversations, spending a lot of staff time. And invariably, that customer would leave thinking one thing and the staff person would leave going back to their desk thinking something else. So we had a lot of miscommunication happening and we had people proceeding with building decks or additions to their homes or fences that would then get called, code compliance would get called on them. And they would say, but you told me I could do this when I came into the front desk. We had no record of that conversation. We had no evidence that we'd met with them or that they'd come in. Not saying they didn't, they might have. We had no record of what they told us. So we completely changed the process so that we now intercept all of our customers and use what we call project guidance. It's a free, fast step where you can go in and use the Jot Form online. And I'll go down here. And you fill out a Jot Form and that initiates the process. It identifies the parcel, identifies the topic of the question, allows you to upload attachments. And this has resulted in, I would say, a notable decline in the number of code compliance cases that we have. And it's also cleaned up our communications in a way that if somebody gives us information, then we have it on record about what they actually told us. And we're able to then think about this and respond. Instead of responding across the counter in real time, which is great in many cases, however, sometimes you have to do some research to think through these things before responding. And it gives us that time to do that research. So going back to the permit process, these graphics that I gave you in paper form, which are probably easier to read, outline the land use application process and the ministerial permit process. The land use permit process is a little more involved and requires some additional steps. The general permitting process, really, you're just trying to get to the point of when your permit is issued. You just want to move forward with your, your project. So we, when going through these, they all start at the same place, submitting a project guidance. Anytime someone is proposing an action in the city, we ask that they submit a project guidance. A file gets created, a staff person gets assigned, and a response gets generated. From that point forward, it's really dependent on the type of action that they're proposing and the different types of qualities or constraints that the property where they're proposing the action might, might have. Are there wetlands or streams or slopes? Is it a big property, a small property? What exactly are you trying to build? From there, the applicant, in some cases, has the requirement that they go through a pre-application conference. This generally applies to projects that are more complicated. It applies to projects like short plats, long plats, properties that have critical areas encumbrances require a pre-application conference. This is required by code. And it is something that has a minimal fee and that we usually are able to schedule very quickly and is an opportunity for an applicant to give us a preliminary proposal, a plan, a narrative, some documents that they're working on that might support their project, where we sit around a table or in a virtual space now, when that's available. We do both in-person and virtual with our, our building division, our clear and grade staff, our, our public works staff, our land use staff, our permit tech. Fire gets invited, east side fire, or excuse me, Sam, Smamish Plateau Water and Sewer District or the Northeast District get invited. And it's basically everyone sits around a table with the applicant and talks through some of the complications they might see in the project design. It's really a, a way to give someone an advance heads-up on what they might be experiencing through permitting. We, we then provide direction on how to apply for the application. If a pre-app isn't required, they, someone can go right to submittal of application. I will note that if you look up on this one, you'll see in the land use application process graphic, at the first bend in the, in the roadmap, there's an optimal, optional pre-development services process. What this is, is when we offer an applicant the opportunity to pay for staff time to review a very specific document, a certain question that requires a lot of research on our part. And it allows us to, as a fee recovery unit, recover cost, helping look into an applicant or developer's specific proposal. And that is optional. That, that can be taken, that step could be taken after a project guidance or after a pre-application conference. But generally happens before a, an actual application is made. Because once your, your application is submitted, staff are already assigned and in review of it. So then you go through the process of finding the correct forms and completing the application materials. We do everything electronically now through My Building Permit. It's really great because it has sped stuff up quite a bit where applicants in the past had to drive up to City Hall and drop off a bundle of plans. And we used to get, you know, six big rolls of plans and we'd have to then find places to store those and handle the paper and stamp the paper. Everything's done electronically and it is amazingly more efficient. We then route the application through screening where the different permit staff who are involved, if it's, you know, Planning Permit Center and Public Works, they all take a quick look at the plan set and the application materials to determine if it is complete. This is not a review of the actual accuracy of all of the documents or plans. It is instead looking to see if it appears that everything we might need to do an initial review is there. If something is missing, we generally kick it back to the applicant and, and notify them of what is missing and are available to answer any questions. There are quite a few items. It's an ever-growing list of things that are required as things get more complicated and we start to see more infill development. We're wanting to make sure that things like property boundary surveys are included and, you know, that plans have, you know, tree protection plans are, are there, that site, site staging and management plans are included. And these are all things that we're wanting an applicant to think about early in the process. So we want to notify them through a checklist of required items that this is something that we really will look for in your, in your proposal. After the application has been deemed complete for processing, the final step in, in the application being accepted is a payment of a fee. For those projects that vest, whether it's vesting to land use codes or vesting to building codes, grandfathering, if you will, sometimes we, we have applicants that are seeing our codes changing on the horizon and they'll want to submit a proposal for development or a home addition or a new home prior to those codes changing. But in order for them to actually vest to the rules in place, they have to pay the fee first. And that is a very common practice and it is often a misunderstanding. Someone will submit an application into the system the day before the code will change. But we have several days to screen it and then several days to issue an invoice. And sometimes it takes them weeks to pay the invoice fees, but they're not actually vested until the application is complete and it's not complete until the fee is paid. The next is, we, we then distribute the plans to the different reviewers within our system. There is a review date assigned. It gets moved into someone's workspace where they begin a review of the actual application. It gets moved into someone's workspace where they begin a review of the actual application. It generally is routed to planning staff, public works staff. The permit center has a role, gets routed to, and we are really fortunate as a jurisdiction because we do have service providers that are contract service providers or are other, other agencies that actually use our permit software. This doesn't happen in all jurisdictions, but we do have Eastside Fire and Rescue who uses our track, our permit tracking system, and they have an extension of that on their computers as well as Sammish Plateau Water and Sewer District, which helps expedite the, the project review because they're able to review it in their offices using it upon the time that they have available as opposed to coming into City Hall and performing that review, which is what some other cities do. Once the plan, plan review is complete, and if you go back to the permitting process, you'll see we're down now to plan review completion. And this, this is where you identify whether or not the application has met all the requirements. Our goal is a first review decision. We sure would love to issue permits by, you know, completing one review and determining them to be complete because that would mean that our applicants are informed and understand what is needed. However, that is generally not the case. We usually at least go through one round of corrections for things to be changed. So they go back through the process of resubmittal. And at that point, that would mean that we would be back to screening. We do screen resubmittals. Sometimes there is another payment due. If it does take a lot of staff time and say you're on the second or third round of review, it can lead to additional fees being, being incurred with the project. Then you go back through plan review again, and assuming that the plan meets the city's codes and requirements, then we can go ahead and issue the permit. And you would move to the next phase, oh, here we are, corrected plan, submittal and review. You'd move to the next phase where you would pay for your permit and receive your permit. So fees for permitting are broken into two buckets, basically. The first bucket is the application submittal fees that, that are paid for you to enable the review of your application. And that is a cost recovery fee that's intended to cover the cost of the staff time reviewing the application for, for its compliance with city codes and getting it to the point where it's ready to be issued. Once the permit is ready to be issued, then there are issuance fees that are due, and those are the fees that are generally designed or, or they're, it, it's intended to cover the amount of inspections that are needed for the actual permit activity. In addition to that, there are, that is the point where you would pay impact fees. There's a code council surcharge from the state, and there is generally a surface water development charge that's part of our surface water fund. So at this point, there can be some fairly significant fees due. And, you know, especially when you start to add up impact fees, park, school, and street impact fees. Once fees are paid, a permit is issued through mybuildingpermit.com, which is our online permit portal. And an applicant can then at that point engage with the city through MVP to do things like request inspections, submit field revisions or corrections, et cetera. So again, going back to the different types, a type, we have a different name for them in the code, and I, I think that thinking them, thinking of them as ministerial, administrative, and quasi judicial is really important to understand that distinction. However, we assign them in the code as a type one decision, type two decision, type three, and type four. So the type one, again, are the ministerial, made by line staff, non-appealable. They're tree permits, clearing and grading permits, building permits. These are appealable to Superior Court through a Land Use Petition Act appeal. If you, for example, did not agree with your neighbor's proposal to build a new house and you thought it was too close to the property line and the city didn't meet its review requirements, that you could, and a permit was granted, you could file an appeal to Superior Court. Might take a while to see that work its way through the court, but, but that is your recourse. Type two decisions are administrative, made by the director designee, and these are discretionary and they're subject to administrative appeal, meaning that if you were unhappy with the permit the city issued, you could file an appeal to the city's hearing examiner and the hearing examiner would render the final decision on the part of the city. If you disagree with the city's hearing examiner decision, you could appeal it to Superior Type three decision is a decision that's actually made by the hearing examiner, appealable to Superior Court. Example, long subdivision or zone reclassification. Type four decision is made by the hearing examiner, again, based on a record. These are shoreline permits that are appealable with the State Shoreline's Hearings Board, which is a unique appeal path, and it relates to things like new docks or skull houses, boat houses, if you will, down, down on the lake. And we do see disputes over those at times that end up in front of the, the shoreline's hearings board, who is a court, or it's a, a group of appointed judges who basically are tailored specifically to review of these permits in, in consideration of the State Shoreline Management Act. Again, shoreline permits are issued, the interesting thing about shoreline permits is they, they are governed by the city's shoreline master program and shoreline code, which has its own unique code. This is everything that is 200 feet landward of the city's shoreline. So that would be Lake Sammish, Pine Lake, and Beaver Lake. And it includes things within the water and landward 200 feet. The really interesting thing about shoreline permitting is that we are really an agent of the state. So under the State Shoreline Management Act, each city is required to tailor a shoreline management program that is unique to that city and that city's shoreline resources. However, the city actually, and this is kind of, kind of, it's difficult to explain, but the city doesn't actually own its own shoreline master program. We do not have the authority to update our shoreline master program on our own. We can make changes to the shoreline master program, but those then have to be sent to the State Department of Ecology, who has to then approve those. And a, a shoreline master program is not considered to be updated until they update their master copy. We have a copy of it, they have the master copy in their vault, and if we want to update it, we have to go to them and ask for their permission to update it. So that is a bit different. So all the rules on the shoreline here had to make their way through the process and had, to have been approved by the State Department of Ecology. And anytime we look at making changes, we have to go to Ecology and get approval. Like the work you'll be seeing in May, we're going to bring to you to integrate our critical areas rules into our shoreline master program. We've been working very closely with the State Department of Ecology for their approval on that. And we're almost there. Some interesting things about that is that the tree retention standards are different, setbacks are different, and there is a different approach to management along the shoreline edge, the 50-foot buffer on Lake Sammish and the 45-foot buffer or shoreline setback, if you will, on, on Pine Lake and Beaver Lake. The focus in those areas is on land, land use activities or activities that are in line with promoting no net loss of ecological function, vegetation retention, native vegetation establishment, et cetera. Town center permits are different than the rest of the city, located in the city, city's town center subarea. It's a bit of a different administrative permit process. One of the things that we have identified previously to you all is that the, the challenge is that it's a, a longer, multi-step process where things sometimes are out of sync. For example, a unified zone development plan permit, a UZDP, is one of the primary tools to authorize larger development in the TCA zone. However, that is a type two administrative permit process. That might proceed a type three subdivision, in the case of Brownstone's East, that's what you saw. And that is, for all purposes, from my perspective and from the industry perspective backwards. Typically, you would start with a higher level permit, a quasi judicial permit, a type three, that would then lead to a type two permit down, further down the line. Usually, you would bundle them together. But in this case, are the way our code is set up is it requires a unified zone development permit first, which is an administrative action that's appealable to the hearing examiner. And then again, an applicant has to come back and apply for a type two commercial site development permit, which is an administrative action and requires public noticing and is again, appealable to the hearing examiner for the same project. So there are two big steps that are administrative steps that are taken in that case. It's something we're going to be looking to clean up with the town center amendments because we, we think that, that we can facilitate development in the town center in a different way, be completely code, code compliant, provide all the outreach and public comment opportunities that are needed within one of those processes. So that's a, that's a bit of, bit of a unique step for the town center. Variances are for sites that have, that are constrained and cannot achieve a reasonable development expectation. They have to demonstrate a hardship, and you cannot grant, create a grant of special privilege or create a precedent through a variance. Variance is run with the project, so if the project is torn down, it doesn't mean that that setback that was granted for that project continues with the property. You'd have to go back through another variance process again. We don't have a lot of variances as a city, but it is a really good tool to address hardships. And we do, we have seen a number of them over the years. I'd say my time here, it hasn't been more than, more than five or six variances that we've processed. Not to be confused with a reasonable use exception permit, which is a form of variance that applies to critical areas. Conditional use permits are used to either address an allowed use that could have a negative outcome if it is not specifically studied for application on that site where it's proposed to be located. An example would be a kennel. You want to make sure that, that the kennel is designed properly, that the noise from a kennel, which could, in a residential neighborhood, impact neighbors, is abated, that, that, that an applicant is doing the right things to address those types of potential impacts. The example is where the Ace Hardware is going in. There was a kennel located with the PetSmart, and we had to do a, we did a conditional use permit with that, I think it was PetSmart, was it the other pet company? And we, we actually did a conditional use permit for them to locate that there and have that use as part of the PetSmart operation. Because there, there was concern about the, the noise from a kennel, especially with the, the Sky Apartments there and the, the, the sound effect that that could cause. So they, they had built it out in a way that would abate that. The other use for a conditional use permit is, so we have these use charts in the land use code that outlines when a use is allowed as a permitted use, or it's not allowed, or it's a conditional use permit, in this case, for the kennel, for example. But there's also instances when uses are just not identified. So when a use is not identified, one way in which we can work through permitting for that use is by processing it through a conditional use permit. And what we would do is, it's a, requires a notice of application, it requires that there's a comment period, we do research on the use, and we identify where there might be impacts, and then we would apply conditions to that project to make sure that, like the kennel, it's not going to cause an impact, a negative impact to surrounding neighborhood, traffic impact, you know, maybe a surface water impact. It really just depends on the type of use. Reasonable use exceptions are kind of like variances for critical areas. These are used to grant limited development on sites that are heavily constrained with critical areas. You must demonstrate that you're eligible, that you're actually constrained. You can't use it to get more area on a property if you already have a reasonable area for development on the site. We do have many sites in Sammish that are left, that are not built, that are almost fully constrained by wetlands or wetland buffers or streams or slopes. And this is a tool that we have to avoid taking of property that, that under, under, you know, the state constitution of private, private property right, a property owner has a right to use their property. However, they have right to reasonable use of that property, not to whatever use they see fit. So what we do is we analyze the uses that exist in the neighborhood, and they, they then are able, allowed to pursue a comparable use to what is allowed in the neighborhood. But it needs to be identified as the minimum necessary, and it typically needs to be accompanied by mitigation measures to offset any impacts. The alternative is that the city could take the property and purchase the property, but generally then we'd be on the hook for the, the value of the property. Temporary use permits are also another great tool that our staff see quite a few of. You know, we have processed things like the farmer's market using temporary use permits in the past, the WPGA that came to town, that was done through temporary use permits. These are a lot of work for very short duration activities. I'll put it that way. When you start to deal with, especially with the WPGA and other, or other activities of that scale, parking and access and what, all the work that goes into working with the, the applicant and making sure they've got everything accounted for, whether it's, if they're going to use amplified sound or their temporary structures, are they, do they have a temporary electrical system? Do they have restroom capacity? All of those things are things that we tend to address through temporary use permits and usually end up with a successful event. So I think there is a purpose for this, and oftentimes there are things that the event proponent hasn't thought of, that our staff come up with that results in a better outcome. So I would like to think there's a value add by our processing temporary use permits. Right-of-way permits, and this is one, I think, where there's a lot of confusion in the community because we often have surprised property owners who didn't realize that the area in front of their home that they had been maintaining was not actually their property and that in fact, that a majority of what is between the street and their house is actually a public right-of-way. Most of our street sections in the city from center line are either 25 feet or 30 feet, so either a 50-foot or a 60-foot road section. If you look at the plat maps, you can see all the, the numbers identified and the road sections identified. So if, you know, we, we generally say, you know, go out to the middle of the paved street, which is not always in the middle. And generally, if you measure back 25 or 30 feet, depending on what it, what it notes in your plat map, that'll be where the edge of your prop, your front yard property is. So right-of-way permits are often a tool that is needed for someone to make a permanent improvement to a right-of-way, or if somebody is having a delivery done and they're going to be shutting down the road for several days or hours at a time, or if someone's removing a tree and they need to chip the tree in the street, will require that they get a right-of-way use permit, which really is focused on traffic control and safety. The idea behind that is that we want to make sure that if somebody is doing something out in the street, that they're doing it in a safe manner and that there is adequate traffic control and, and safety in place. The second type is related to, it's a type B right-of-way permit, which is related to making actual physical improvements in the right-of-way. This is where someone might be doing a frontage improvement or building a sidewalk, or there's, maybe it's a, a utility purveyor that is out boring fiber lines. That's going to be that type of permit. The third type of right-of-way permit is easiest to understand as a cell tower. If you're going to put something permanent in the right-of-way, we do lease public property to private entities for the, for certain purposes, when you have a franchise or when you have a use that is something that's allowed in the right-of-way, like a cell tower and the accompanying equipment cabinets. So that's another form of right-of-way permit. Moving into inspections, these are loaded in a logical manner, depending on the permit type. It doesn't always perfectly match the, the project type, and sometimes we either need to remove or load additional inspections in the sequence of construction. This starts typically with the, this is where you hand off from the office staff who are doing the permit review to the field staff who are doing the inspections. So what we do is we do a pre-construction and meeting, which is where, depends on the scale of the project, the, the, the office staff representative will go out with the lead inspection representative and meet with the developer. And at that point, they'll talk about all of the conditions or unique components of the project, and ideally pass off any special conditions and notify the builder of any notify the builder of any, of any special inspections that will need to happen, or anything that they need to pay attention to. This one is one that we are constantly revisiting and relearning, because inspectors are really busy, and we want to make sure that there is adequate information at their fingertips to deliver to the builder. You know, this is the opportunity where the, this is the, this is the, the instance where the, the building side of it, the private side of it, is also doing a handoff, where the architect and engineer are handing it off to now the builder, and there's opportunity for miscommunication there as well. So we're really honing in on this as one of the most important steps in the permit process, because we don't want to end up in a situation where the planning staff found something in a plan and corrected it, and the architect agreed to that correction, but the builder isn't aware of it, and then they're going to do something that is not compliant with city code, or cause some issues out in the field by not having adequate tree protection, or staging areas, or access. So this is really, I think, one of the most pivotal points in the permit process. After the project is built, and what happens with, with, excuse me, with the, we're almost done here. What, what happens with inspections is, they call in for their inspection, and the next day, the city will go out and deliver that inspection. And it progresses along with the sequencing. So if building a new single-family home, you know, the, the initial grading, you move into foundation, you move into framing, you move into plumbing and electrical, you move into siding, you move into, you know, trusses and sheathing and all of those things, and each one of those points in the process, there's an inspection that has to happen before you can move to the next step. And inspector will come in and sign off on it, and you can see we have these loaded, and there's, you know, generally a hundred or more of these inspections that are loaded down on this page, you can see here, this is right out of our, our permit tracking system. So you can find notes, you can see photos, it's, they keep, this is where they keep track of all the information about what's actually happening out in the field. Some of them do a better job than others, some of them are really busy. I think it really depends on how, sometimes, you know, an inspector will perform 20 or 25 inspections in a day, and that is a huge volume. So they're running all over the city, and they try to be as strategic as they can geographically in the city. It really depends on our construction volume, but it's a lot harder to keep track of notes and photos and entering data into the system when you're that busy. Project closeout. So this is at the final point in the process where they passed all their inspections, they get their final inspection, the, the notes are all made on, on anything that's noteworthy about stormwater systems, or things that, that the owners should be aware of. This is where documents get recorded. There, there oftentimes are, I want to, I'm going to get this wrong, but for the stormwater people, it's a, it's a site, BM, stormwater BMPs. So in many instances, as part of a new home design or a project design, our, our stormwater regulations require infiltration or onsite management of stormwater before you convey and, and, you know, send the water down a, down a pipe or a ditch. So what, what that requires is that that, that, that facility that's onsite be maintained in perpetuity. See, they're in the form of a vegetated flow path or a swale, and we require that somebody records a note on title that there are these stormwater BMPs on their property, because what we don't want to have happen is, and we do see this happen on occasion, and we have inspectors that do go out annually and inspect these, is that there was a, a stormwater practice that was absolutely essential to the project being designed, like a vegetated flow path or a swale, that was then filled in, and now there's a patio there in the backyard. So we want to make sure that these are on, on title, that people are noticed of these when they're buying a home, and there are notes about, you know, the, the fact that if you put in a concrete patio in your vegetated flow path, we're sorry, but you're going to have to take the patio out. And we do have those instances, we do deal with that. Another item here is performance agreements and financial guarantees. This is something that we're seeing as a tool that we're using more and more, especially in the world of tree retention. We have requests for applicants to use alternative tree protection measures, that might be a reduced radius around the tree, a tree, you know, drip, drip line, it might be where they're going to, they're going to trench through a root zone with, under the guidance of an arborist, maybe they'll use an aerospray and try and put a pipe underneath a tree or something. What we do require is that they post a bond equal to $1,500 a diameter inch for that tree when they're doing that, and it emphasizes the fact that they do need to have the arborist on site, and they do need to take this seriously. We have had some challenges with tree retention by way of tree protection, and it's a constant thing, I'll say, we're, we're always dealing with that. But this is a tool that we're seeing as really getting property owners' attention, that the tree protection is a serious thing in the city, and that if they're successful, then we release the bond. If they're not successful and the tree is damaged, then what we do is we require that it be replaced at a ratio of eight to one, and we retain the bond for five years while those trees become established. So, and it is all written into the performance agreement, so if somebody doesn't do that, then we do have that leverage to ensure that the site is restored. If we don't have the agreement and the bond in place, it can be much more difficult to bring about restoration, and sometimes we have to go to civil compliance, where we end up fining someone $1,500 a diameter inch for the tree that was damaged or removed. Public process, this is all part of the, the permit process. I just want to highlight that, that anybody can look up a parcel, if you go into, if you have the parcel number or the address, you can go into My Building Permit, and you don't have to have a account, but you can punch in the address or the parcel number, and you can search all of the permits on that parcel, and it does identify for you what the sta, what the status of that permit is, is it active, is it issued, is it under construction? It does also allow you to then to identify the permit numbers, which makes public records requests a lot easier for our public records staff, that they then generally know, when you give them a permit number and you want the records associated with that permit, exactly what you want. It's when we get vague requests about, I want information about construction activity on this site, there could be a wide range of permits or activities over the years, so it's harder for our public records staff to pull those records. Public noticing and information and notices is absolutely essential for public process. We do put a lot of effort into the information that goes into it, it's hard to fit all that information on one page. There's public comment periods that people need to be aware of, and I'll show that example here in a minute. There's parties of record, meaning that if you submit comment on something, you become a party of record. That's really an important status to, to obtain, if you're interested in a project. Submit a comment, it could be even a positive comment. Then, then there's the hearing process, which, you know, we, it's another opportunity when there is a hearing for someone to provide feedback on a project to the hearing examiner. We went over appeals, there's generally two paths of appeal here in the city, either, either administrative, either a ministerial action to Superior Court, an administrative action to the hearing examiner, or the hearing examiner decision to Superior Court, unless you're a shoreline permit and you're going to the shoreline hearings board. The role of the city council and the planning commission are really as the, setting the, the policy direction, establishing regulation, and providing the staffing and budget for us to operate. And getting to the very end, oh, I guess we, we'd loaded these, I'm sorry, this, this is an example of a notice of application, it's very wordy, it's very hard to fit all of this information on one page. This really is a, a legal document on our part, you know, it is a, something that we legally have to do, so we're wanting to get it all in there. This is an example of one that could use some, some improvements. For example, the public comment period right in the middle should be probably bigger font or highlighted, or some, somehow draw your attention to that, so you know there's a comment period. And also the, the method of submitting comment, which I think is down lower, there's usually a jot form that we use to submit comment. Then, the other thing I wanted to highlight is that for all applications that go out the door with a notice of application, we always include an FTP link for all of the project documents. So we make available to the public everything that is submitted by the applicant, and then all you have to do is click on that, that, the high tail link, it's an FTP link, it takes you to a, a unique site for this application, and it will show you all of the documents that we've received. When we do issue a notice of decision, it's the same thing, and it includes everything that's been submitted through the permit cycle, and this is something that's often overlooked, I think because of all the words here and the way it's presented by, by interested parties, they, they say, you know, we, we were not, no one gave us the application materials to respond to, well, they're all here in the FTP, and, you know, we'll continue to work to improve these. This, this one, I say, you know, I probably would make some improvements to it. I just want to use a, a good, a good example of what might be, what we're normally looking at. With that, that's the close of my presentation. Thank you for sitting through that, I know it was a lot of information, and happy to answer any questions.
It was a lot of information, so council, looks like we have council member Sid Gupta, and then we have Roshino Farrell.
Yeah, thank you, David. It's always a pleasure to get to hear you speak, I feel like I learn so much every time you present to us, thank you. Now, let me see if I can actually find my questions, this is going to be a fun challenge. Do you have an example of when an applicant may choose to use the optional pre-development services?
Yes, so that usually comes in the case of, let's say you have a wetland on your property, and you want to make sure that the city has had a chance to review your wetland reports, so that you're able to, what applicants want more than anything is predictability, and what they don't want to do is go through the expensive process of designing a project to then submit it only on the first round of review, to have us kick it back and say, no, you need to make these fundamental changes. Another example is application of public work standards and getting clarity around maybe the stormwater manual, and how the stormwater manual might apply to that specific site. These are really technical things that, that we would review during the process, but that brings some unpredictability for the applicant, and we wanted to, we want to give them the opportunity upfront to, to have that review. Now, with wetlands and streams and things like that, we are always very clear that we cannot give a final answer until we get through the public comment period, because often during public comment, we get information from neighbors about a wetland or about a stream, that the, the, the qualified professional, the, the environmental scientist who's doing the wetland report, or the, the stream report, didn't know about. So sometimes the, the circumstance does change by way of additional information from neighbors that we get through public comment, about seasonality of something, or history of something, and how it came to be. So there is a really important step in that process when neighbors are involved with the, the, the notice, notification, if that makes sense. It's, if, if you read through the wetland delineation manual, there are generally three, three type, well, there's, there's three parameters, there's hydrology, soils, and vegetation. And hydrology is really hard to establish, and there is a whole chapter in the wetland delineation manual about information from neighbors, and observations, and things like that, and how that can affect the, the location of a wetland and the type of a wetland. So that's an example.
Right, thank you. You mentioned where applicants may try to submit a project in advance, or expectation of rules changing, and them not understanding that the application has to be accepted, and the fees have to be paid for that project to be vested. Is that something that you are still seeing? You mentioned that, that if there's a lot of misunderstanding there, are there steps being taken to mitigate that? As, do you see that as like an ongoing problem?
Yes, notifying, information on our website, banners on our permit center page, banners on our My Building Permit website, that makes sure, makes sure people are aware of that. It is written in our code fairly clearly, and working on making sure that the notifications that somebody gets when they submit into My Building Permit says that you need to be aware, you know, that you, not only does this need to be screened, but fee needs to be paid for it to be determined complete.
Great, thank you. And could you, you mentioned in under variances, it must not create a grant of special privilege. Could you tell us what a grant of special privilege is?
It would be, I'm trying to think of it, something that the zoning would not otherwise allow. So for example, if you, you had a 35-foot building height limit in the zoning, the zoning controls, and you wanted to go to 45 feet, so that you could have a view tower over your neighbor. You know, we, we probably have someone who's asked for something like that over the years. It's, you know, generally, someone is trying to achieve something with their property, I understand, and the zoning controls are limiting what they can do, and they're trying to find a way to achieve it. Others are tree retention, that, you know, they're, they're, an example would be somebody who has a really high number of trees on their site, and they, they can only remove a certain percentage of the trees, but they have a, still have a high density of trees, we probably would allow them to use a variance to go beyond that, if they were, if there was mitigating circumstances, meaning that they had, they had a, a tree replacement plan or a, an urban forest management plan for their property. In many, in some instances, we have sites that have a, you know, a, a stand of trees that really needs to be managed to phase out a certain type of tree and phase in another type, like for example, if you had a bunch of red alder and cottonwood, maybe you wanted to phase in a cedar and a spruce mix into that, we might allow you to start thinning out the alder and cottonwood in favor of starting to plant trees that are in line with your management plan, that, that's done by a qualified professional. But that would be done through a variance.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, David, for the presentation. I watched the planning commission meeting on the 3rd, where you spoke for almost two hours about permitting, and, you know, I learned so much, well done, that was amazing.
I think that's sweet, Shane.
Yeah, I know, and answered everybody's questions, so I encourage everybody to watch the planning commission meeting on April 3rd, it was very educational. I had a question about enforcement. Do you feel that we are adequately staffed in terms of enforcement, or is there other things that we need, if it's not personnel, but is there other things that we may need that would help us enforce permit regulations, maybe, because you had mentioned as well at the meeting, construction site management, where you have lots of different people involved in the organizing of a site once the project's underway, and making sure everything goes the way it does? So is there something that the city needs to kind of improve on those issues?
A great, great question. So from the code compliance side, just for strictly code compliance, we are, we've actually seen a decline in the number of code cases. We, we, we kind of got to an all-time high with COVID. Everyone was home, everyone was doing something, and everyone was looking at what their neighbor was doing. So we, we had a definite spike in code cases during the COVID years, and we've seen a steady decline since then. We have a permit compliance issue that is different. So there's code compliance, which is when somebody does something that maybe needed a permit and they didn't get one, or that is in violation of our code and didn't have approval to do that, that's code compliance, right? Then, permit compliance is when we have a permit that's been issued, and somebody is not compliant with the terms of the permit. We, we have been seeing a lot of that recently, where builders are taking shortcuts, and where, you know, we're not on site all the time. The inspectors go out when they're called to perform one of the scheduled inspections that's necessary in the construction sequencing. They do, when they have time, stop by, and when they're driving to a site, they'll swing by another site and take a look at what's going on, but we're not ever present. There was a period, we had a proposal from a Sammamish resident who was, had just retired from Microsoft and AI and military AI, and he had a proposal that we start a drone inspection program, and he wanted to use this as a And he wanted to use this as a pilot in the city, where we would basically register plans into a system using AI. And then the drones could go out every day and fly around all the construction sites and could pick up whether the fencing was in the right place, the staging was in the right place. And then it would flag sites for us that would prioritize our inspectors, you know, going out and looking at something that maybe isn't in compliance. They ran it by legal and that was a no-go. Was it, was an interesting proposal, though. And I think the builders would have been a little fearful of that. But, and there's some pretty, you know, amazing people here in Sammamish who have some amazing skill sets. And that was just one individual who had an idea and he wanted to run it by us. But to answer your question, we do, we do need, we're focusing on some additional training with site management. And we're refocusing on the entire process from end to end. From the end where the applicant has an idea and they're designing something. Well, how are you going to build this? Where are you going to store your materials? How are you going to access the site? Where do the utilities come in? Where's the foundation going? How's the excavator going to get down to the other side? We have seen projects where they put the foundation in and then they realized that they couldn't get the excavator on the other side of the building now because there's fences on both sides. And they've got a huge mountain of material down there. And how are they going to get the material out of there? So, you know, these are sort of elementary things with construction that we're seeing go sideways. So we're really starting to work with the designers, with the, you know, the planning staff and the public work staff and making sure that it's properly handed off to the, to the construction crews and the construction inspectors. And we're adding new submittal items. So that's why I highlight the submittal items. We're going to be adding a whole new item about a site management plan that's going to go along with it so that it's really clear how they're supposed to be managing their site, where their, oftentimes plans get really busy. Topo lines, utilities, foundations, tree protection. You know, there's so much stuff going on in a plan that it's hard to pull out where the construction limits are easily. So what we're going to do is we're going to float to the surface a plan set that just shows where the construction limits are, where the tree fencing is, where the staging is, where the access is, where the utilities are coming in, where the trenching's happening.
Wonderful.
So those are all things we're working on. And it requires cross-disciplined education. We're going to meet in this room in a few weeks with all of the planning staff, all the permit center staff, all the inspection staff. And we're going to do a little Kysen process improvement to try and really rethink how we manage construction for all types of construction, for all different sized projects.
That sounds wonderful. Thank you, David, for that. And then last thing, are we kind of going through this as well? Is this in response to HP 5290 as well? Like trying to clean up and make the permitting process a little bit more simplified?
I think in the spirit of that, we are continuing to do that. We did, we are compliant with 5290. We did make those changes needed with our, those, I think we adopted those back in November and they took effect. And we have been working, most of that was on the side of permitting and permitting review and permit issuance. And we have made changes to our process to speed that up. Again, it becomes a whole thing of volume and staffing. And if we end up in a situation where we have a high volume, we end up with diluted ability to, you know, focus on. When everything becomes an emergency, nothing's an emergency.
Yeah. And then I just wanted to say thank you for the flow charts. Their visuals are always my favorite. So thank you for that. This makes it a little bit more understandable. So appreciate it.
This one was inspired by chutes and ladders.
Love it, love it. Thank you so much, David. We're so lucky to have you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lamb.
I'm glad you mentioned AI. That was my question. Did you see, are there any tools on the horizon that you see that will help streamline our process?
That's a really good question. We've seen in the field inspections being done, not, not our inspections, but things like bridge inspections, tower inspections. We don't have them here in Sammamish, but there are, there are agencies that are using drone equipment to do inspections. With regard to AI, you know, I would love to see our ability to, you know, have things flag and automatically highlight things like tree protection. Or maybe there's a way to add a line weight and color or a line texture that is, that, because it's all done, all the plans are produced electronically. They're all reviewed electronically now. We've had this conversation with a couple of engineers about our permit plan requirements are still thinking we're doing it in paper. And we need to rethink how plans are designed. There's these, there's two coordinate systems generally out there. There's what's called the world coordinate system, which is you're not confined to an X and a Y axis. You're using the world as your coordinates. And then there's, there's a plan coordinate system, which is where you're on an X and Y axis. And traditionally, plans are based off of a plan coordinate that uses a scale that will fit the project on it. And then you have an X and Y axis that you work off of. And the idea here is that you can ditch that because now the plan size is not constrained to a printed sheet. So now you're navigating around in real-world coordinates. And you can, you can, you can change the precision and the clarity of things because you could zoom in and zoom out as opposed to, you know, using a magnifying glass on a sheet of paper. And unfortunately, the permit systems that all the cities have are still based on that old system. So we're, it is a regional conversation about how to move into the future, or I guess get caught up with today, and really try to change how we see plans designed and reviewed. And that then might lead to things like AI and the ability to use different line weights and textures and things that the system, a system could identify.
That's cool, thank you. I guess it's not a matter of if it's going to happen, just more when. Thank you.
And someone who wants to invest in that type of technology and if there's money in it.
Well, that kind of leads me to my question, I think, about my building permit. So everybody uses my building permit?
Only cities that are members use it.
Ah, okay. And so our processes and procedures are very similar then, I would assume?
So there's a governance committee that meets regularly. There's multiple levels of the governance committee that, you know, there's, and they basically work out a way in which one portal can address the multitude of different agencies that use it, whether it's King County, Bellevue, Issaquah, Kirkland, Sammamish, you know, there's, and then many more that use it. And everybody has a different system. So we have different permit tracking systems on the back. And it's a front-end storefront.
Gotcha.
That has to connect on the back end and be adaptable to all of our different business practices.
Because I did kind of wonder how our business practice compared against others. That was one question. How often is that portal updated to stay current with trends? Would be another question. And then the third kicker, which is trying to understand the notification process so that people understand where they are in the system. So that if I, as long as I'm getting pinged back with your package is in Redmond, that kind of notification, so that I understand and have expectations that are set realistically. I was trying to understand that piece. You've taken me to that slide. So I'll actually let you answer that question.
So to answer the last one, is how are you notified? So the bottom one here is my building permit, right? And generally speaking, if you're properly registered with your account and your permit application and all the right information is entered, you're going to get all the notifications. Where the disconnect is, is where someone registers and they use their architect's email. And they want to be getting the notices. And they get upset because they're not getting notices. But the reality is, is they put the wrong email in there.
Okay.
That is probably one of the most common things we hear is why am I not getting the notices? Well, we go into the system and we see that. And sometimes they have an account. And they, maybe they did a permit in another jurisdiction and they use a different email or phone number there. And they didn't update their account with this new permit, right? So there's that type of thing. So you, we do utilize it, like if we send out a request for corrections, so someone submits it, we review it. We send out a request for corrections. It goes to their, their chosen method of notification. And they get notified. When, you know, one of the things that I think is really important and I've been working with the planners on, and this has been a bit of a curve back from COVID, is that, you know, I really want them, when they're doing plan review, to not just find something wrong with the project and then send a correction letter. If there's something that they don't understand, pick up the phone and call the designer. And they're, they're, they're good at it. They do it. But it requires constant reminders. It's like, you guys got to pick up the phone and call them. And when I, I did a plan review for a large number of years. And I found it absolutely so helpful to call the designer. I'm looking at this. I'm not seeing where you addressed this. Oh, it's on sheet 22. Oh, okay, I see it now. You know, it's, it's, rather than sending them a correction letter, it takes them, you know, a week to get it. They open it, they read it, they get upset about it. And then it takes other staff time to address that. Then they send a correction back. It takes, you know, four or five weeks for the whole cycle to go through. Everything gets delayed. Just pick up the phone and call them.
So would you say this friction with communication is the reason why people have such a terrible time with permits in general? Because they, I mean, I'd hate to do the PR program for permitting. It would be a tough sell. Because I'm, I, I know you've got this wonderful process. It's very clear. It's clearly outlined. And yet, I'm not sure this is the same as people's experience with it.
Right. And that is what I was trying to get to with this quote. This is a really good book. I mean, if you're a government wonk and you want to understand sort of the nuances of, you know, things like permit programs. And I think is in producing invisible things for people who do not want them. Nobody wants to file an application for a permit. They want to go and build the thing they want to build. So our job is to make it as easy as we can for them to understand what they need to do, how to do it, and what the process is and what to expect. So it's predictable. And that, if we can achieve that, then we've been successful. Whether or not they're happy about it is, I think, you know, a different story. So when we do get positive feedback for permitting, it is a really big deal. And we do get positive feedback that, you know, somebody says, hey, this was, you know, you made this process so much better than, than it could have been. Because that person recognizes how bad it could have been.
Does your, my, my permit, my building permit, does it allow you to upload a digital file in terms of a voicemail or a Zoom call?
It does not.
You have an FTP site.
So like a, like a, like a narrative.
Like a narrative, like I had the conversation with the designer. Here it is. Clip, insert.
It does not currently allow us to do that. I mean, that's an interesting, it'd be a lot faster than typing it out.
Oh, yeah.
Or you could be, you could use the dictate mode and maybe that'd be easy, too.
Okay. Those are my questions. Any other questions? Or can we release David into the night?
Release him.
Release him. Be free, David. And thank you for your time and for working us through this process.
Thank you.
Okay, council. We are now to council reports and city manager report. Deputy City Manager, do you have a report for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, a couple of quick things. One, I want to remind all of you, as well as the community, that as the mayor mentioned briefly, Earth Day is coming up. So mark your calendars. It is on Saturday, April 18th, from 11:00 to 2:00 at Beaver Lake Park. Lots of great opportunities for the young and not so young as well. So come on down. The second thing is, I just want to remind again the council and the community that next week, this council will be taking up a couple of resolutions in support of different members of our community, specifically our immigrant community, as well as our LBGTQIA+ community. So just want to invite folks who are interested in those to come down and be a part of that important evening. So thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, other council members. Deputy Mayor Lamb.
I have a solid waste committee meeting on Friday. I need to send out the agenda.
Councilmember Farrell? Yes, no? Sid Gupta? Sorry.
I have a public issues committee meeting tomorrow evening. I sent out the agenda. Please let me know if you have any questions.
And I have an east side fire and rescue meeting on Thursday. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.[1788.86]